You all set? Did you do something when you opened?
I'm all set. Okay, great. The police department budget made up of street functions. It's the police operations, communications, and emergency management. You each have been provided a handout which is reflective of the Selective. You want to see how this is associated here? Thank you. You've each been provided a handout which is reflective of the adjustments made by the Board of Selective. Included in those handouts are both percentage increases for each line with the corresponding dollar amount. In the following slides through the presentation, I will address those lines which have increases, and we will provide reasoning for those changes. Lines based on current unemployment have not been included in an effort to eliminate duplication of information. And with that, on the following slide, I will address some of the issues.
Can everyone see these numbers okay? What I've done is listed the lines that have increased for this year. The first one is the regular wages. I've asked to refund the position that was cut last year because it wasn't filled. We've had that position for four or five years prior. We had a gap where we couldn't get someone into the police academy, and that position was eliminated. If you look on your handouts, some of the calls for service, our calls for service this year alone are up over a thousand from last year. That's a concern. If we are going to maintain the level of service that the community has had to expect, as identified in our community survey, it feels imperative that we add that second, that officer into, or we can get that taken out of the line.
If I could just interject one point. It's no secret that publicly we've seen a lot of burglaries in the community due to the, again, it's usually bipartisan economy, I think most communities have seen it. What you probably also should have noticed in your communities, you probably have seen police cruisers driving around your streets a lot more because they are. And when we talk about calls for service, that doesn't even include, I guess, the patrols that are being more stepped up in many neighborhoods due to break-ins, et cetera. So you'll see heightened patrols, but that doesn't always translate into calls for service.
Correct. We've implemented neighborhood patrols where we have an officer assigned. Let's say you live on Cross Street in Rochanville, that area of town. There is an officer specifically assigned to that area who go out and in contact with the folks that live there, and that goes on throughout the town. Each officer is assigned a certain neighborhood. So that's a step that we're taking to be proactive in reducing these burglaries. Unfortunately, with the economy, the burglaries are just out of control. Also included in the wage line is salaries for the police, records, and legal personnel. The salaries for police are also part of the contract that was passed last year, as we here talked about. Any questions on that line? Specialty re wages. It's a large increase here. Last year, we, there was a petition article on the ballot to go forward with a revolving account for police details, and that was shot down. This year, we have presidential debates coming, and I believe one presidential debate runs between four and six thousand dollars in that line alone for one. Last, three years ago, I believe we did three to five of them. Okay? They're a huge impact on our budget. If it's not budgeted for, it has to come out of the other parts of the budget. But we've increased it by that much. There is an input into the back, back into the budget from the money that we receive from the vendors. And in the case of St. A's, we go through St. Anselm's College so that we're not dealing directly with the campaigns. In the past, we used to get stiff for lack of federal work by the campaigns who either dropped out of the race right after that debate, or they didn't last a couple more months, and we were stuck with the bill. Now, the money is sent through St. Anselm's College, to Anselm's College to sue the rest, and pay us. So we've done that step to alleviate that concern.
So sort of double check, make sure we understand that although that line did increase, there is a course line that increased the revenue on the back end. Okay?
Our police retirement has gone up. That's because of the downshifting from the state to the local level. And I might already said about that, that's what's been given down by the state. Professional dues have gone up a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but I felt it was worth mentioning. We've got a new chaplain on board, a volunteer chaplain. She comes in at about thirty hours a week to give to the community. Within her first six weeks, she did eight death notifications. She's counseled some of the employees and the department along them to return to work faster. She put herself through a class, a week-long class, if we were two-week-long class, up in Seattle, Washington. She threw herself out there, she attended a class, and came back on her own time. There's a hundred and twenty-five-dollar fee going to Chaplain's organization, and I think for that, it's a good thing for our project.
Can I just add to that? We haven't had a chaplain for several years. Prior to this chaplain, his father, Don, who was an actual St. Anselm's church here in Washington, was a police chaplain, and then when he got re-signed back up to the local by the citizens, we have resigned because he was unavailable. And that space has been vacant since that time Father Don left the area to the, uh, senior.
Clothing and uniforms are increased this year. For the last two years of the budget cycle, we've had five percent increases from our supplier. We've identified five percent each year, so a ten percent increase total. While the current expenditures may not be reflected in your budget sheets that we've maxed out, I can assure you that as of this past week, signing off on the fall uniform or winter uniforms, we are now over expended or very close to it in that last year. So the increase there, we've got two people in the academy currently. They'll be coming out. They, when they go into the academy, they only receive a basic uniform issue in the likely or in the top chance that they don't succeed with the academy. We don't want to completely outfit them, spend that money, to find out three weeks into the academy, they drop out or have been sent home. So what we do is minimal input or little, minimal issue, and then once they get out, they're still due, and they'll be out in December, they'll be getting winter coats, boots, winter shirts, et cetera. So that's another output that we'll be having in addition to what we've already spent. Employee development covers numerous lines, ammo. For new hires, we're running into increased costs. Every town around is looking to supplement their budget. Bedford's now charging, I believe it's three fifty, three twenty-five for a polygraph test. It is mandatory to have an officer take a polygraph test before he is sent to the police academy. It's three hundred and twenty-five dollars trying to hire somebody to take a polygraph test. The medical tests are up to two fifty, two seventy-five, and they have to have a full physical before they go. These costs keep increasing as well. One of the things when I became chief is to increase the educational level of our officers. Currently, I have one officer enrolled in a master's degree program and a second enrolled in a bachelor's degree program. Would I expect an increase from there? We do not pay the whole thing, we just take a portion of that. Travel expenses, we want to see an increase this year in that. As you know, we're in accreditation infancy. Every three years, we're required to appear before the GLEA or Commission on Accreditation. That is coming up in April. We need to go to Arizona, that's where the meeting is. Last time we took four, and this year we'll be taking three of us. My accreditation manager, her assistant, and myself have to go before the board, present or answer any questions concerning our policy, our procedures, our standards, and our compliance here. That's the expected travel expenses. Total copy of contract, that's gone up, we just bought three hundred and sixty dollars. The reason being, we bought Scanware, our Scanflow software, and what we've done is we've tried to eliminate the need for more storage, more handling of documents, where we're scanning things in immediately that are not required to maintain our copy on. So that we've got less filing, less storage concerns. And storage for us right now is a huge concern. Our basement is almost completely full of storage materials, and we don't know what else we're going to do. So we've gone and purchased the software, scanned, and alleviated some of those concerns.
And again, I'm going to make a plug to our state rep who's here. Anything that you can do to help us with these types of things, you know, government needs to be more efficient. A lot of that is the electronic world, and our budgets are given to electronically. Yet our RSAs, most of them require hard copies of things, and John, anything you can do to help promote more efficiency with people would be great. But unfortunately, I'd say the majority of stuff that we do in government, and sue to protect me if I'm wrong, right? We have to keep hard copies. I talked to the town clerk, everything is hard copy, everything. And it's just, it's costly, you can't retrieve it easily enough, you can't perform searches and bring it up on doc, I mean, so anything that can help us in that regard would be a great benefit. Need to change in the law, unfortunately.
Next one is our crime lab expenses. With the increase in burglies, assaults, trespasses, it requires more materials to investigate. There are a variety of ways we can do that. We can do it with dehydrant, which is a supply we need to lift fingerprints off of paper. There's dusting powders, there's electrostatic lifters, and we can do footprints off of carpets and walls and doors, things of that sort. We have now depleted our sources low enough that we're going to need to reconsider putting that money back in to buy those. Currently, I have not expended my fuel line. The reason is, if you look at my fuel line, my detail line, and throw all the lines, I'm quite a bit over expended. So I'm making the cutbacks of those, and hopefully we'll get the people here. And toxilizer expenses. While the machine is certified and provided by the state, the materials operated are not. The tubes, the capture sample tubes, mouthpieces, those all have to be paid for by the town. In addition to that, we now have a tortile breakfast that we use roadside. Those mouthpieces also have to be purchased by us. If we have a fatal accident or a serious bodily injury accident, we are required to take two blood samples an hour apart from at least one of the operators. And if we can identify two operators, we can do four in one accident. Okay? If they've committed a crime, any of them. That's running two hundred dollars a blood test. Each blood test is two hundred, so that's eight hundred dollars out of one single accident. The concern is that we are going to run out of money that time. I should do the next slide. Previous line. Council last time. Taking charges, operating supplies.
Oh, that's the doubt. Number right there. That's the question.
Yes. Operating supplies, the increase is based on our usage. Over the past four years, I've expended eighty-nine percent, a hundred and twelve percent, eighty-nine percent, and this year, I'm already ninety-six point five percent expended on my operating supplies. I've got at least two more orders of paper, supplies, year-end supplies that I have to make, and I will fire a team, I like on this line, this year. We have made efforts in scanning through newspaper use, and fortunately, the cost is going up, which is eating away at our overall budget on this line. Postage and general wear, same's going up a penny. The increase, three hundred dollars. We'll be onsite coming, we do mailouts of our, some of our materials to the commission or the assessors ahead of time. Last time, I believe, was four libraries filed off and that we shipped. That will be increased cost for us as well this year. Books and publications, again, I'm already over expended this year on those. Furniture and fixtures, we've identified numerous things within this twenty-year-old or twenty-five-year-old department that have been ablaze. We're trying to maintain the building itself, but chairs are gone, carpets are gone, and we're trying to work on getting those restored in the building so that we can maintain this building in the future. Any questions so far?
I have a question. According to, let's say you pull somebody over and they blow, over, believe, there's a fine incurred when they get pulled over, does that go to offset some of those costs?
Absolutely not. The state thinks that with open arms.
Is that something the state applies to look into, to have some of these fines go back into some of the expenses?
Years ago, when I first started.
I know the answer, if you know about it.
When I first started, it was unfortunate, always came back to the town. And they take, the state said, you know what, we're running the courts, we're running the judges, we're running the bailers.
Police academies. Will come save the testing money?
That's a whole different matter. But that has been taken over by the state. We see none of that money. What we see is a thirty-dollar fee for my officer to go and testify against that money. That thirty dollars is we send back to the town. Thirty dollars, price of an officer. On overtime, it doesn't even cover this one hour.
As a follow-up to that, if that money is earned, returned to the town, then you could possibly have concern that people be pulled over when town's budgets are running low. So they are now pulling people over more, who wasn't going to receive more money.
So some people, some people automatically assume, like, oh, you're trying to just raise money. We don't, we don't get it for moving violation.
Right, so that's, the point being that that's not an incentive to be pulled over because of town. The police chief can't go out and say, my budget's getting low, so I need all my officers to go out and give out speed fix to, and get money back. That's not the case, so.
Any other questions regarding to this budget line or? The next one is the animal control expense. Two years ago, it was kind of a budget that we pick up dead animals. That has come and reared its dead ugly head. We had a call this past summer of a deer hit on Tanya Plummer Road, or at least across from the condos. I could have hired another dispatcher to take a note of calls. It smells, who's picking it up, where's it going, what are you going to do with it? Under state law, we have a responsibility for public health to remove dead animals. That line has been cut. That line includes what we've done in the past is a twenty-five-dollar fee for whoever does the pickup, per pickup. So if I see a squirrel on the side of the road, we're not going to go pick up a dead squirrel. We have a dead dog, deer, live or animal on the side of the road or in the road. We're going to call when we get one or two together. Will we wait ten or fifteen days for one or two? No. But again, we've judged in the past that we've been able to maintain, it was about fifteen hundred dollars an hour to pick up dead animals. This past September, we had a fire where, if I remember correctly, we were four dead animals. What do you do with them? While we're continually investigating this arson or fire or whatever it was, it was a fire, I'm not sure if it was an arson, but I'd like to speak further than that. Well, what do you do with the dead animals in the house? They have to, to help you. And that's, that's why we're looking to find, it's a minimal amount of money, but it's going to serve very good for the entire town, I think. Chief?
Yes.
How many, how much does it cost per animal pickup? Or was that twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars a pickup. So a bike in the range, thirty pickups?
Twenty-five dollars. And it's thirty-two hundred, we got that many dead animals?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Really?
Now, when you say thirty-two hundred, what you're looking at is the overall budget. The increase is twelve hundred. If I have a dog that bites somebody, I have to care for that dog because I have to impound it. If I have stray dogs, or I eat something like that, yes, I have to take care of those as well. I have to heat, um.
So that's not just pickup?
That's not just pickup, it's an increase.
Okay.
Driving, the pickup is the increase driver.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Are these being contracted out, or is it a police officer who will pick up these dead animals?
We will contract that out. We will hire somebody to pick it up on a part-time, contract basis. The problem is, we need to have rabies shots. The person that used to do it is no longer interested in doing it. You've got to have issues to address, disposal of the animals, where you do pick them up, where you're going to put them. So that all has to be worked out.
Chief, I'm looking at your, year-end for last year on Animal Control, you spent seventy-eight bucks, and this year, you're eighty.
Mm-hmm.
To go back to what John was asking, we have that many dead animals, but this is reflecting very, very few at twenty-five.
That doesn't reflect dead animals. For the last two years, we've not picked up dead animals.
We stopped the policy.
We stopped picking up.
So we pick them up.
Nobody. Pick them off the side of the road illegal.
And that was half, if the issue came up.
And that's the thing with the deer, I will tell you that we got hold of Highway, when we worked with Highway, it was that, the stench was that bad that we called Highway in.
Say Highway?
No, Town Highway, with a loader, picked it up on the side, and then go and bury it.
This is the Fish and Game responsible for that?
Absolutely not. They won't touch dead animals. Years ago, we used to call them, you're right, we used to, years ago, we'd call them, got a dead deer here, what do you want? Tell me the sex of it. Okay? That's all they want. They never, I've, twenty, well, almost thirty years now, I've never seen Fish and Game come for a dead animal.
And I did bring that up on the board because of the fact that they are, those animals need a license for them. So with that rationale, you would think that Fish and Game would have a responsibility for it.
And next is the crime prevention equipment. Under this line, in addition to buying new materials for officer friendly visits and things of that sort, we also pull other resources from that line. One is our canine program. Our canine program has had two dogs now for three years. The bike sleeves, and if you haven't had a chance to put a bike sleeve on, it's an experience, but the bike sleeves are wearing out. I saw our two elves on one of my dog guy's arms the other day. It's time we need to buy bikes to properly train these dogs. Additionally, we need to replace a mountain bike. That's over a thousand dollars. The reason being is, we are trying to reduce our fuel usage by increasing our bike controls, motorcycle, mountain bike controls. By increasing our mountain bike controls, we have more wear and tear on our bikes. I'm currently running three officers on a bike and a half that were basically stealing parts off, allowing Peter to take fall to get his other bike working. It's in rough shape, and it's over six years old. So we're looking to replace the second mountain bike. Next line is the accreditation expenses. Again, as I said, we've got onsite fees coming. We've got two assessors that come into town, we're responsible to pay for their lodging, their meals, and then any of the other incidentals that come along with that. We also have a yearly accreditation fee that we have to pay. Accreditation to us is everything, and it is to the community. In police work, we're in a very high liability occupation. We've been sued, can be sued, use of force, false arrest, we picked it into their motor vehicle accidents. Our policies are nationally recognized. They've been tried, and when I say tried, I'm meaning court tried. Several years ago, the department was sued. Part of the lawsuit indicated that we did not act properly. We used excessive force, we did this, we did that. I was one of those officers. I sat there and listened to the prosecutor, the prosecutor, or, sorry, not prosecutor, the plaintiff's lawyer tell this story. My question is whether or not I was even there to listen to the story. Our lawyer listened to our story, viewed our policies. Our insurance company said, let's go forward and take this to trial. We took it to trial, and we received a defendant's line and the other officer and the town's verdict. We were not, or a boat guilty on union of the charter because of our strong policies, because of our way we do business and our procedures. The lawyer for our side came out and said, the reason we went to trial and the reason we won was greatly dependent on your credit status. It's that the amount of money we were looking to lose was multi-million dollars, the town Maintenance charges on vehicles, there's a slight increase. The reason being, we're going to, and we'll talk about that in CIP, we're going for two cruises this year, not three. We reduced, we were scheduled to go for three. Again, a year of saving fuel, we've reduced mileage on our expedition, four-wheel drive, we're going to use it for inclement weather, and that, that will be yet. However, that will increase one vehicle that runs twenty-four-seven, so the miles will be going up on that. Without replacing other cars, we're concerned that the increase in maintenance of those vehicles will go up. We'll place two cruises.
Chief?
Yes.
Are you still be able to purchase Crown Pits?
No.
So there's going to be?
Police interceptors. There are three, there are three vehicles out there. This Dodge Charger, there's the Chevy Capri, and the police interceptor package, which now is the Crown Victoria Police Interceptor. Getting to the Crown Victoria Police Interceptor, it's more along the lines of a, larger force. I won't say larger, but.
So you're, you're, you're putting on cruises, busy bars, all that, are not going to be transferable?
Likely not. Our, and the reason I'm saying that, some of the departments that have purchased them in the recent past, these light bars, are finding that they can't. Our light bars are in excess of ten, twelve years old, some of them. And that's the concern. The cages inside will not fit, they've got the side curtain airbags now, the tires, the concern is with the old ones, they're going to puncture rupture or not allow safety weapon, bad safety weapon to deploy properly or effectively. So that's the concern there. We've got different mounts inside vehicles, weapons mounts, radio mounts, computer mounts. Maintenance charges in the building, again, we're looking, some of our doors in our building, and probably shouldn't be said in public, aren't locking properly. We're catching them every so often that you can just pull on the door and walk in the back door or the side door. That's not something we want, especially if they're trying to walk out those doors as well. Some of the prisoner areas, we want to redo those locks, get them squared away. We're looking at shut-offs for our lights. Our department is twenty-four-seven, there's people there all day, all night. We're looking for automatic shut-offs for our lights and hope to save energy in the long run. We want to get them installed throughout the building, I guess coordinated between each other so that, like, you cut it on one side of the room, the other side is telling you the same thing. So again, it's more of a cost savings measure on the long years, this year it's going to be an outlay. Security cameras, we're looking at a date. These security cameras around our building and part of our infrastructure as far as the radio systems, et cetera, are in excess of twenty years old. Some of them aren't working, some of them you can't see what it is you're looking at. It's rainy. We're looking at an upgrade, about, I think it's twelve hundred dollars, twelve thousand dollars. We're looking at an upgrade, I think it's $1,200, $12,000.
Hey, Chief?
Yes?
Want to ask? And if we're, our doors aren't blocking, I don't want to say that a lot again, why don't we get them fixed now instead of waiting for the flood to pass? I understand you're stealing money from somewhere else.
We're making temporary repairs from the can, okay? My problem is, if you look at some of my bigger lines, my detail lines, and then the fear that I've got another major coming up, I'm already over expended. I'm expen, I project out $24,000 over expended on my fuel line this year, and there's other overspenditures that I can't control, this is one of those things that I will control and can't control. I have to roll Peter and paintball. Well, if, if it's critical, i.e. a booking room that someone's going to take out of the door, that's fixed. A back door entrance or a side door entrance may not, or a door shutting properly, okay? If I've got to have someone work out and dispatch to pull the front door closed, I'm going to try. We've got communications budget. Communications budget, we have three increases. Employee development, we currently have one dispatcher that's brand new. We need to send that person to school for certification trainings in fire and police emergency dispatch, as well as spots, school training. It's a fairly minimal increase, but it's something that we're trying to restore to our budget that truly reflects what we're spending. The next one is the communications furniture fixtures. Because this is a different budget for operations, I have one office that needs new traffic, new chair, new desk. It's been there for 24 years. It was temporary furniture at best when we got it. It's time for a repair, it's tired, it's old, it's agnostic. And then finally, telecommunications is reflective of the two new phone lines that we have installed as part of our radio brand, our radio brand upgrade. These are phone lines that because there's not a direct line of sight from the antenna repeater site to the mountain for a relay, is then sent through the phone lines, okay? And these phone lines, we had an estimated $32, we're up to $100 million, I think $134 or per line, so that's the increase here. Per month? Per month, yes, I'm sorry. Emergency management, employee development, we're looking, I've got a new command staff officer, part of the grant process requires and looks at, who do we have trained and how do we have, have training on what levels for emergency management, ICS training, youth training, if you will. One of my new command staff officers is newly trained. We will make every attempt to do it here in state for your charge through the fire academy. But if not, we've got to get him trained. This will help with emergency management performance grants, et cetera, and that's the whole year. Police emergency management, who, I've upped that $150. Don't believe we do that this year. We came that close to using it, we're using it all for Hurricane Irene. Couple 50 miles different from the track of that storm, it could have been in the same spot where Montana's in. For $150, the last time we used it, I believe I used $250 to feed the goats at Glen Lake, Village Black Falls during the ice storm, remember that? Finally, printing and binding, it was funded at a dollar, I've moved it up to $250. Hurricane Irene, I have a search team that's 74 people plus strong, they are a vital part of this community. If you don't know one, please learn about them. They went to the 250th block party, they set up a tent and disseminated information to our community members about being ready for hurricane, what to do, who to contact, and what, where to go should you need. In addition to that, that same week, they had flyers printed up, went door to door down in the parks to notify the people of potential flooding, the river rising, potential evacuation. Three different times they went down to the parks, in addition to making this move. Because this line was cut to a dollar, the printing and everything else of those flyers came out of the police operation budget. And again, back to door locks versus notifying people that they may have to leave their house, there may be water coming through the front door. I'll pick over the front, the water through the front door over the lock. Any questions before we hit CIP?
Is it a national incident management system?
Finally, I have two items in CIP, there are two cruisers, replacement cruisers, both the ones being replaced have over 90,000 miles as we speak, and that's still almost six months ago before we have them up and operational. These average about 30,000 miles per year, so we're only on the 15,000 by the time they're ready to deploy. And the final item on CIP is the upgrade of communications, it's the final phase, it's the actual consoles within the radio room in the police department. Offsetting this with 50% match through the MPG, which is part of the need to train our people for emergency management to get those. Any questions?
Scott, I would like to borrow some time.
Why do you want some time?
If you don't want to?
Sure.
Just a couple of things I'd like to do in wrapping up here, because I don't want to cut them down. The chief mentioned they need to replace one of the mountain bikes. The bike patrol program was a program that was instituted through former chief Steve Monier. He came to the board of selection with a proposal, board of selection approved it. He initiated the program and was very well received by the community. It's been very effective in crime prevention and also apprehending several perpetrators, especially down in the North Hill area when it was first implemented. Ironically, with a ring that was out stealing bicycles from the community and neighbor, neighboring communities. So that program has been around for a while. I bring that up because these things are out in the community, and after they've been out in the community, sometimes you don't realize that they're there yet, that that's what that program is. Also, the accreditation that the chief brought up is very important to the community. Some people may say, well, why do we need that? Why do we need to spend the money? Why do we have to fly you down, down to the Calia program? And I'll tell you, I think the budget committee, we were going through the process of the reaccreditation and chief, well, former chief French, wasn't chief French at the time of this, chief Monier, but French at the time was in charge of the accreditation program as it was going through. And he presented that to the board of selection, and I was there as a member of the budget committee, and we all went through that process. And I remember when I was first on the board, it was a neighboring community, I don't want to say the name, but if anybody wants to know, ask me and I'll tell you. They had an arrest of a minister, and long story short, they lost in court, they were charged, they were fined a million dollars because of the type of a thing, it's not carried by, covered by their carrier. So the community had to come up with a million dollars that obviously wasn't in their budget. They suffered, and when I was sitting there and I said, following that, that, that process, I looked at that and I said, that won't happen in our community because our offices will never do the things that you do, and that's what proved that over the years. And just in a nutshell, the things that the chief has gone through with the department, the cuts that he, the way he's been able to manage that budget with the board of selection, and also working with the other departments in town, has been able to provide a level of service on a threadbare budget. And that is what we've become accustomed to. That's what's attracted people, the energy of Gosham, what's made Gosham what it is, and we would like to continue that level of service. So with that, I invite any member who would like to spend a Friday night or a Saturday night, now, any night, but especially on a Friday night or a Saturday night, because you'll see, possibly see one of those breathalyzer being used. Spend a few hours, walk with a cruiser, and just see what happens in the community. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm sure we'll try to be excellent.
Yes, sir. As a, for something like bicycles, has an attempt ever been made to ask for an in-kind donation for many of the detail manufacturers? Is that an option?
We've done that in the past, actually. The problem is now that there are so many bike programs out there, where has a bike? Liquor Orson has a bike.
I don't know.
Everyone has these bike programs. When we first got into it, we were one of the first agencies in the entire state, and we got those donations. Now, it's a market. I mean, people understand that this is a market for police mountain bikes. No, there aren't any more donations. They, they don't give them. That's, unfortunately, you took advantage of it when it was there, it's not, it's not going to be able to take care of it now.
You talked about the place producing fuel consumption. What kind of others have you talked about?
As far as reducing fuel consumption? We, I currently have imposed an 80 mile shift restriction. We were averaging 100 miles a shift in the 12-hour shift, we're now down to 80. If I can eliminate any miles per shift, and I've got three guys on the bike, over the range of two or three days, it's 240 miles.
You say the bike pays for itself very easily, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. There's, there's no further questions?